City Commission.
I hear that you will help the mayor, commissioners, and all council people in their deliberations. Father, we need your wisdom from one high to reach into our minds so that we can intellectually be able to discern what is right and wrong, that you will reach into our hearts so that we will have compassion for all people. We certainly appreciate, Father, the success of this meeting already because of the intention in which this awesome tethering is given to you in peace and thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a presentation tonight, so if you wish to speak, raise your right hand and bring it up to the city attorney. Our city clerk, city clerk, sorry.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solidly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Horns, this is for O-18-18, an ordinance pending, ordinance 1103, the 2025 Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan. Our revised future land use map series by assigning residential low future land use to two annexed parcels, repealing all ordinances and curating providing an effective date. General location, two vacant parcels located northeast corner of 21st Street Northwest and Pierce Road. The area covered by these requests is 23.3 plus or minus acres. Thank you. One thing I do want to just make note of, and that is anything that we do with regard to this, we've always had the FAA and the DOT aviation branch, if you will, sign off and give approval. So to the extent that we would need to get their approval for a further amendment to the lease, we got the lease originally approved. And of course, in the lease, it requires the design and construction documents to all be approved by the FAA, and so we would continue to work towards that. But I think tonight is more just a presentation with the commission, questions, you know, regarding the issues, and then certainly a consensus that I, I mean, if you're, if you are okay voting on that time, I would think that consensus would be sufficient, and then we'll bring back the formal document that would be the first amendment to the actual lease agreement.
Okay, let me open up the mic, commissioners, any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Clerk.
Break down the 6.9 million, how much of that's going to go, like say, to the building with the?
The current protected cost is about a million and a half dollars off the construction of the seaplane base. A lot of that is due to the environmental considerations of clearing the shoreline and dealing with the lakefront, so we're working with Swift Mud on that. They've been very supportive, as has everyone in that regard, and another $5 million is for the second site, which is on the airport proper, which is preparation of land, doing the environmental work and construction of the building.
And what about the, how are you going to get from the one kind across 21st Street, do you?
We've engineered a crossroad taxiway, there'll be gates that come down across the road just temporarily while the airplanes go across. That'll be triggered by the pilots, and we've engineered that, and there's several active examples. Matter of fact, John Pratt is here from Alaska, it's something very common that they do at Lake Good in Anchorage, Alaska, and it's not something that's unheard of, and it has precedence and working very well, so we're copying their lead.
Is that included in the 6.9 price tag?
6.5, yes.
6.5, okay. And, you know, the traffic, as we expand, we've got more development coming on to the airport and maybe around the airport, and the 21st Street has become a bit of a problem as far as traffic goes. There'd be a lot of traffic there. How many planes anticipate are going to be coming in?
You'll only be one a day on average, that'll be, that'll be pretty negligible. Most of the airplanes, like my own airplane, I, so I have two seaplanes at the airport right now, they both land in either land or water. It would be the occasional airplane, like we have airplanes that transit down here from Minnesota, and we have adventure seaplanes that is operating currently out of Lake Pierce that would like to operate out of Winter Haven, and when they bring their airplanes over for maintenance, which we want to, you know, the airport's very interested in developing more maintenance opportunities, as they brought their airplanes into Lake Partridge, we could dial them out and across, it would have almost, you know, terribly minimal impact on any traffic needs.
Okay, and how much truffle have you raised right now, it's several hundred thousand?
Yeah, we raised about $300,000, and then we've donated another $300,000 in services so far, and we do have partners, the Hangar Door, which is one of the largest single items in the expense, has been donated by a company called Higher Power, they're also one of the larger donors for Son of Fun, and they also donated the Hangar Door down at the EA, Chapter down at Sebring.
And the, so the problem with the hole, I mean, you try to get the hole in collage on it, where you have a lot of water, and you have a compound there, you have to go through the crossing, you have to have the airport nearly the crossing gates, and, you know, then come up with, well, yeah, we've got the money, but we're going to build the seaplane base. What happens if you don't raise any money after that, what's we got?
The seaplane base, which we are handing over to the city, in our lease, one of the things that we wanted to ensure is that the use was not exclusive to us, so it is a resource.
Yeah, I'm saying, I only touch you off, and the seaplane base will be on the water side, well, it would be across 21st Street?
Correct, but it'll still be connected, the airport improvement plan includes the connection, and that's already been funded by Florida DOT, so the funding is in place for that, that's not dependent on our funding.
So if all you build, the seaplane base, how much would it cost us to connect that to the airport, go across, how much would it cost the city?
That funding is in place by Florida DOT and the grant, that's already been approved by Florida State Department, that's not costing the state of Winter Haven anything.
And that, and that will go on even though we're going to continue, if we were to continue the lease, if you already checked out the?
It's, it's in the airport improvement plan, it's already, it's in the master plan of the airport, it's been approved by Florida DOT and the FAA.
I understand that part, but we don't ever get a seat, you're one of those thinking of having to build a gate across 21st Street, right?
Yes, the seaplane, when the seaplane base is completed and there's a need for that to go operational, then it can be done. I'm trying to answer you as directly as possible.
Well, I'm trying to say that, have you talked to the FDOT, we've talked to FAA?
It's already approved, it's already, the funding has been guaranteed.
And I don't mean to cut you off, but have you talked about getting this extension, or how long you think you want the extension for, have you talked to the locals?
Yes, all the building approvals are in place, they've actually, at the moment, all the engineering for the building is approved, they're not concerned with the lease, it's a, it's a city of winter payment lease, it's in the plan, when it happens, they're ready to, it gets approved, so there's not a ticking timeline on, on their side, there's a ticking timeline on the city.
Well, just so we're clear on the point, and I don't believe in a lot, but City Winter Haven, I mean, that is very concerned by FAA applying for the emergency, so I, I don't want, there'd be a sense of commission that is a minimum concern by the FAA, anything that we do here, we'll certainly get approval by the FAA to include in the extension of us or anything that has any bearing on this project, because as you know, we want to maintain our agreement with our grant insurance, as well as with our FAA, DOT, so, good question.
I'm saying, I can't predict what the FAA is going to have, or the, or the DOT is going to have two years from now, because they're not holding this money to think you guys are, are they, or something I don't know about?
It's the grant assurance fund.
Will that, will that ever go away, or will it, or not be distributed to somebody else, or are we doing anything about the second operation?
No, I would not go, I mean, if this is, would be an agreement with the seaplane base, and they would develop that, 21st Street is the city road, and we would have control over that crossing, and, you know, I think our understanding is we wouldn't, it wouldn't cost the city anything to make those approvals for that crossing.
I understand that, but the problem now is that they're trying to extend something, and we're waiting on money that's promised to us, you know, that's something, it's half like to get things done and run away that we planned on, but so, as far as that area of the airport, in the development of that area of the airport, I mean, I don't know if we really have anything else to?
Well, there is, there, right now, there is nothing else that would be coming behind this, or if this didn't happen, we don't have any other plan to put somebody else there. Nobody else has asked for this location, and we aren't planning for anybody else there. And when we did the master plan update, that update included the seaplane base going at this location. If they weren't able to do this for some reason, then we could plan for something else, conceivably, but right now, there is nothing else that we have that we could, anybody else we could go to to say we have this location available, because other people that have express interest in the airport have expressed interest in other locations of the airport.
I mean, that's a, to me, what was the original number that you had when you came up to the commission back in, I guess it must have been the summer of 2015?
Yeah, we were, we were hoping to do the project for 5 million, and hope we're seeing this again, the economy's kind of very hot right now, and the building costs are rising very quickly, drywall, all the, you know, just steel prices, everything else, and of course, the core of the building is steel, and we're doing it first class, I mean, we wanted to be a showcase facility to the community for our association. If you look at the airport, it's renamed itself the Seaplane Capital, that's because it's our white house that will be there, so our interest is, is in creating the greatest benefit to the community. There are more seaplane pilots that are trained at that airport than any other facility. Matter of fact, every other school in the world together does not match the volume that Jack Brown does, it's kind of a unique situation, so we've got a lot of synergy there, and we often, we're just trying to move into the terminal, as a matter of fact, we were trying to get some office space in the terminal so we could show that move to the airport, and unfortunately, I guess there's a big process or something, there's a flight school that's going to go in space, and we're looking to make that temporary move again to get on airport facilities, more expeditions, development.
We don't have a deal, no bail.
When did we start this process, you want to share?
As I recall, I think it was around 2015, is when the original lease, and then there was another lease, ultimately the lease was approved in July of 2016, officially approved by the city commission, but we started in 2015, not apartment 15, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, it was a pretty extensive lease process, not to spend a lot of time together, it was, yeah, easily 15.
The only concern I have, obviously, is that the spend, what is called three and a half years, and you raised $300,000, we get the impact, I think, but $300,000 cash to build this thing, so, obviously, if there's nobody else, as Merle points out, that probably because this is tied up, but there aren't many seaplane operations beginning around that are looking, you know, relocate, I'm sure, because if you go to Taverries, they call themselves the Seaplane Capital of the world as well.
Mary is a seaplane city.
But the, you know, so my point, I guess, is that, you know, we're tying up our land in hopes that this thing happens, I hear what you're saying, but the reality is, you raise $300,000 in three and a half years, and if you're looking for another two-year extension, what's the reality of raising six and a half million dollars?
The donors were approaching, we're looking for seven-figure donations, and that's, again, why you spend the time to develop your ask, you have to have all of your ducks in the row, when you sit down with John Nordstrom, when you sit down with Google, when you sit down with the people of the caliber that we're sitting down with, it's a very polished ask that you just don't do lightly. Also, I have to admit, I, you know, that the land has been vacant for the entire history, there has been no development, the idea was that we were going to be an anchor to attract public businesses to the airport and the community, which is our desire, so, quite honestly, that, that the land, there's no other tenants, I don't think, looking for the land, and it's been vacant, our, our goal is to bring an opportunity to the community. And John Jury, the city manager of Taverries, is on our board, and we selected, even with that being the case, we selected Winter Haven over Taverries, because there was a runway where Taverries does not have a runway. The stipulation was we wanted road, water, and runway access, and that was the unique feature about Winter Haven, was they could provide all three with very easy access from both Tampa International and Orlando, and with the synergy of Jack Brown's, creating the highest number of seaplane pilots in the world, many flight school, the synergy was, was right.
Do, do you, have you talked to the FAA or DOT for grants for them, they seem like they've got lots of money for airport stuff?
Well, like I said, the initial, the taxiway development that we were discussing about connecting the airport to 21st Street, that was approved by Florida DOT, that's a $500,000 grant. My job as an advocate nationwide, is I work with the FAA every day, I, I work with, you know, Fish and Wildlife, right now, we're working with USGS on a national level project, so my job is working with these agencies, we have very good relationships with them, we don't anticipate any, any issues.
Do you have any professional grant writers you can employ other than?
We're a fundraiser. That's right, so we're, we're searching for one right now, we have a, a, we're looking for a full-time donor development person right now.
That's a grant writer?
That's part of their responsibilities, is grant writing. It's hard, you know, quite honestly, we're running, each of you have a copy of the magazine, I do 50 safety seminars from Alaska to Florida, we have 5,000 members that we represent, each one of those safety seminars is recognized by the FAA, matter of fact, they're requesting us to schedule some more in Alaska right now. We're publishing this full-color glossy magazine, we're maintaining a scholarship program, we award a dozen seaplane scholarships a year, and we have three full-time employees, and we have about 65 volunteers working with us, so it's a, it's an 18-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week job for me, it's, it's a challenge.
Sounds like it, you get three employees, and you're going to woo.
Yeah, 5,000 member organization, publishing a full-color glossy magazine, everything else, so that's why it's hard, we're dividing our resources.
Isn't that much money? I think a really, I think, and get something started out there, it's going to be much easier. So consensus, I'm okay with extended, all right, so, all right, so John, just go ahead and, you got three of us anyway, so you go ahead and draft it up, so.
Do it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
So noted, we all know that, so.
Thank you.
All right, anybody from the audience who wishes to talk about the minutes? Seeing none, gentlemen, questions on the minutes? All those brave indicators say aye, votes like sign, men's pass. All right, comments from the audience? If I'd like to come forward, please come forward, give us your name and address, you have five minutes. I don't have a sheet, everybody else wants to speak, they're welcome.
Jim Lamai, 3,000 Lake Newport Northwest, I work outside in my yard every day, so I get a good idea of what type of planes are out there, and I can tell you that the seaplanes are terrible, they fly, some of them fly right over my house, and it's not even in the flight system. Also, I would like to ask the planning staff, if you have come to report, they just recently did a noise study on the noise generated from the airport that's going to be reviewed in this next case, if that study included the increased noise from the airport, I mean, from the seaplane base?
It included, I guess, evaluation of all the planes that use the airport currently.
Okay, but we're talking about future now, and these seaplanes make a whole lot more noise than those conditional aircraft?
Well, the study that was done, I don't know the details from the standpoint of it was done, of course, with FAA requirements for conducting noise studies and evaluating the average noise associated with takeoff and landing patterns for the airport.
So the answer's no.
I don't know that the answer's no, I told you that it was in compliance with FAA requirements.
Okay, but we're talking about a new development that's coming in here shortly, that depends on the amount of noise generated from aircraft.
It didn't make any consideration, because that's part of the airport master plan.
But you said the master plan was based on existing aircraft?
No, I said that it was based on the airport master plan, that airport master plan anticipates future aircraft.
He just told us that he anticipated more aircraft coming, okay. Next, there's an bald eagle that perches itself over my house, and I can see him get scared and fly away, and these seaplanes come by, so there's all kinds of other waterfowl that are all over plane cartridge, including different types of pleasure boats, jet steeds, fishing boats, this is a disaster waiting to happen, so I think that you should reconsider to not extend this and not do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have some others that want to speak, just want to make sure that you're not talking about something that we're on the agenda, this is, we have things coming up, everybody wrote in here, other agenda items other than David Olson, David wants to speak on ordinance O-1818, is that what everybody else, is that what, Phil, you want to speak on something on the agenda? How about, I can't read this one, 3100 Lake View, that, on something on the agenda? Okay, we'll get to you, is what I'm saying, we're going to call on you when we break into that item. Jim Lynn from Lamai?
Here.
Well, that's who you are, okay.
Sir.
Sherry Rubel? Okay, we'll call on you guys in just a minute, let's get to that point of the agenda, then we'll, we'll make sure you have a chance. And David Olson, okay, so, name and address, American.
Good evening, my name is Karen Tedder, I'm an attorney at Lounge Drive, 215 North Theola Drive, Orlando, Florida. Your presentation's coming up in just four seconds. Just for the sake of time, I'm going to combine the two presentations, I understand that these are separate votes in regards to the rezoning and the content of the event, but since they both tie in, I'll be addressing both of the issues. I won't come back up and review the presentation for the second ordinance, but of course, if there's any questions relative to that specifically, I'd be happy to come back up and talk about that.
Just, well, you have, what, five minutes if you're presenting the case to your applicant, so go ahead, just make sure that that go off, okay? Thank you.
Here's a project there, let's say there's 23.3 vacant acres of property located in the northeast corner of 21st Street Northwest and Pierce Road, we're requesting change to residential low density future land use and a planned unit development zoning designation. In the background, there's a negotiation of these two parcels that occurred in January 22nd of 2018, in those cases, we had asked for a 91 unit single-family subdivision, that was heard by the city commission last year, February 2018, so we don't have this one for quite some time. On February 6th of last year, the city commission said 6-1, staff had noted approval of our request to assign residential low density future land use as a lesion. City commission transferred our request for future land use change to PUD on February 26th, 2018, we got a letter on April 4th, 2018, and confirmed there were no comments or objections. Now, based on some questions that were raised in that interim period between the commission hearings, we paid to update the noise study for the city airport master plan, there was a question with regards specifically to the noise contour map, now we'll save one of the questions that we just heard during public comment with regards to what was taken into consideration, if you look at table 3.2 on page four of the noise study, it takes into consideration the base year of the study, the 2017, future years of the study are 2023 out to 2028, and there's actually a table that lists the different types of aircrafts that they analyze, so it's not just one type of plane, they look at everything from single-engine, multi-engine, jets, rotorcraft, and then there's a category warthunder, and so it doesn't just look at what we have now, that's happening on a day-by-day projection of flights, it also looks at what they anticipate future flight theme all the way out through 2028, and again, the parameters of those noise studies are dictated, and they have to be reviewed and approved by the FAA, and in this instance, after paying well over $10,000 to get that study done, it was announced, submitted, and accepted by the FAA in November of 2018. So from the perspective of validity of that noise study, that met all the requirements that the FAA would need to be able to adopt that new noise contour map, which, again, the city commission also adopted it last year on January 28th of this year. So the applicant has amended its request to 71 units of residential homes instead of 91 originally contemplated, so any concerns with regards to noise contours or the acceptability of being able to construct near an airport, this plan is in compliance with all FAA regulations, it doesn't put any FAA grants apparatus, because the FAA has approved the plan to make sure of that, and it complies with statutory regulations with regards to building residential uses near airports. On January 3rd, 2018, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of our PUD zoning request. So our request of approval consisted with staff and with the planning commission recommendations for ordinance is O-1818, O-19. Just some project details, this is a concept, and you can see that red line at the top of the noise contour. For publicly maintained streets, we'll have an internal right-of-way width of 50 feet, internal roadway theme is a minimum of 20 feet wide, a curb and outer range system, we have privately maintained streets that utilize a minimum of 40 foot wide right-of-way, any classes will have a homeowners association attached to it, all of our lanes taken, all of the internal roadways, and our perimeter limits taken will all be maintained by the homeowners association as required in the declaration of trip and covenants that will come along post-project approval. The developer also has identified a right-of-way along 21st Street Northwest to allow for 35 feet of a central line of that right-of-way, and these are conditions also that are contained within the PUD zoning ordinance. These are, so today, we had some conversations with regards to sidewalks, saying what we were redoing for sidewalks, so in the beginning, we had spoken to staff, we came up with a plan for sidewalks, and then we heard many wants more sidewalks constructed now, rather than abandoned, so the new language, which I believe John presented you, that's part of a condition in the PUD zoning ordinance will read as follows. So in lieu of providing a six-foot sidewalk along the front edge, along the east side of 21st Street Northwest, we're going to have a six-foot sidewalk along the west side of 21st Street Northwest, from Jesse Road to Riddle Road. So Jesse Road to Riddle Road, and I think there might be a, did we get a graphic put together by staff, question, and not that we did, so I won't even use a laser pointer, it'll be something much clearer. And that's going to provide a continuous sidewalk along the west side of 21st Street Northwest, south that happened at Old Bar. In addition, these six-foot sidewalks will now be installed along the south side of Riddle Road from 21st Street Northwest to Aviation Drive Northwest, in lieu of providing a five-foot wide sidewalk along Jesse Road, provided a further that we shall construct a standard crosswalk in accordance with city standards across 21st Street at the subdivision's entrance to allow and facilitate the safe access of pedestrian traffic across 21st Street Northwest to the sidewalk along the west side of 21st Street Northwest. And no north-south sidewalk along the east side of 21st Street Northwest shall be required to be constructed or permanently mounted, or by the permission of the sidewalks and crosswalk that are required to be instructed to have set forth here. So that's the language of the new conditions that was sent over by John today and that my client approved, if this project is to move forward, so that we have certainty as to exactly what would go in for sidewalks for this project, and hopefully staff can give a graphic that will clarify that. And all the sidewalks and crosswalks have to be installed in accordance with city standards prior to final acceptance of our subdivision infrastructure. The building standards are set forth in the PUD zoning ordinance as well, so we have minimum parcel area requirements, minimum lot width, and we leave all of the standards as we liberate here. With regards to the landscape, we're asking a minimum of 10 feet wide provided along 21st Street Northwest, Pierce Road, and Lake Newport, in accordance with this table, and one of the requirements in that PUD zoning ordinance as well, is there has to be a certain mixture of different types of trees that are being planted at equal lengths around our project, and those trees actually have to be planted prior to CO, so that means you're not going to have to wait years for landscaping to go in, the landscaping is going in, so when people move in, it is really a moving brand community, that's what it'd be nice if landscape were our residents. In terms of traffic, if you look at the numbers on traffic, oftentimes, there's a difference between perception of a lot of traffic on the road and when a road is designed to be a multi-handle, so the numbers that your staff have also approved in putting in the report shows you, that if you look, our project will use less than 5% of the total roadway capacity, so the potential new demand at a peak hour in the evening for when folks typically returning home from work, is 37 trips and 38 trips, respectively, on 21st Street Northwest, northbound and southbound, and that's a one-for-one, so a trip is one in and one out, so we're saying that we're going to have 37 in 38, which is a pretty minimal number on a PM peak hour, again, those are the numbers that staff have put in the report with regards to traffic, so if you look at this subdivision with respect to the overall capacity available today on this roadway, there is sufficient capacity for this project to be moved online. In terms of the criteria for approval, your company has a plan set forth some policies, and I won't worry you dead with them, I'm sure you guys are all very familiar, but your staff did anywhere in that inside the staff report, it said that the following policies will have under this application, one is the future land use policy, 1.3.2, with regards to density, if you look at the density on this project, we are only requesting a density of 3.05 million units per acre, this future land use will allow anywhere between 2 and 10, and I'll show you a chart that gives the densities of the surrounding subdivisions, and we are either below or just above the average density in this area, which goes towards prudent compatibility analysis as your staff concluded. In addition, the following policies show the different types of future land use objectives, transportation policies, blocks of light conservation, you'll read through in that PUD, I didn't want to go over every condition in the PUD, but there are some energy efficient conditions, certain environmentally friendly landscaping conditions that we have, so your staff has done a very good job of analyzing what your company has planned once, and requires for new developments, and putting those specifically as criteria within the PUD zoning ordinance, so you could be assured that it will be compliant in satisfaction of these policies. In terms of the criteria for approval, based on expected demands or sufficient capacity available, with water, sewer, transportation, elementary and this, with regards to high school, we requested updated currency letter, because the one that originally was granted in the numbers in your staff report are based off 91 single-family homes, so that deficiency of some agency of eight, there's a deficiency of eight student spots, that is based on us having 91 homes and student generation numbers coming off of 91, we're waiting for that updated letter, but again, in the staff report, it's very clear that as a condition of our recycling approval, we would have to demonstrate that there is available capacity, if there is not available capacity at that time, all developers are required to go through mitigation strategies and techniques that have to be approved, so it's not as if we can move forward if there is not capacity or real mitigation strategies to deal with any lack of capacity, but I just wanted to point out that those numbers were based on a higher density than we're actually proposing. In addition, when I noted that, I would show you a table, this is the compatibility with the surrounding developments, this is from your staff report, it gives you some of the nearby subdivisions, and we're surrounded by single-family homes, in addition to the airport and the multi-family, but the density in the area has been very compatible, only having 3.05 million units per acre, you can see that we are below the nearest street and above, but again, with that 2 to 10 million units per acre range, we are on the lower side of the level of density for this future land use designation. So our request again is approval, consistent with staff and the city commission recommendations of both ordinances before we do tonight, but appreciate the opportunity to answer any questions that you might have, we have our project engineer, record, Philip here as well, and if there's any comments from the public question, I'd ask for the opportunity to come back and address those again.
Thank you, the report, anybody else got any questions or comments?
I don't have any, I'm going to show that, take the G2, that, picture, which I have here, but I hope I got some. I think I've got some handouts, but I can put it on the screen.
You can roll that now?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead, let's do that now.
Mr. Phil Hines, I live at 1619 Pierce Road, I've lived there for two and a half years, I moved from Brandon, lived there since 79, and, boy, this sounds sweet, oh, And boy, this sounds sweet. Oh, you know, standards, formulas and all that. I travel on 21st Street every day. I worked night shift for the last 14 and a half years and I switched to day shift. You know, and you're talking about, you know, the standard with the traffic on the road, that's an I-4. Law enforcement is non-existent on this road, okay? You're putting 70, what, 71 homes in right there down the street? You're putting 72 homes, townhouses. Nobody said nothing about that. That's near Havendale. All right? 21st Street, have you done a study on the traffic on that road? You're tripling 10 times more the traffic on that road. The road that goes up around near the airport, that's a drag strip for kids on the weekends. We got ATVs, people dumping trash. I mean, it's a mess. I'm sick and tired of it. There's an ATV that goes down there with no muffler every weekend. Nothing gets done about. Like I said, law enforcement is non-existent down here. It's another I-4. The average speed coming down that road is 40 to 60 miles an hour. If you don't keep up, you're going to get run over. That's my biggest worry with the traffic. Again, all right? Now, are you all putting up a fence or a barrier so I don't have to look at somebody's backyard? There's going to be a fence?
Yes.
All the way around?
I think it will, am I right?
But take into consideration, this is just one subdivision you're talking about. On the other end of 21st Street, you've got another one going here. That's going to be townhouses. I mean, the traffic is going to be doubled. Is anything, what about a turn lane to go in that subdivision?
They go one. All right. The right turn lane, they go to right turn lane.
And what about the road condition on the backside of the airport on 21st Street? The road, it's just patchwork.
That is one of the roads that is in the TIP plan for this current district. Yes, sir.
Answer the question about the buffer along Pierce Road. Of course, this, the density of this is the same as the subdivision across Pierce Road. So typically, we would not require a buffer there. There is a condition, recommended condition that says a landscape buffer, a minimum of 10 feet wide shall be provided along 21st Street Northwest, Pierce Road and Lakeview Court in accordance with the table below. And then there's a table that requires overstory trees, understory trees, shrubs. And it says fence or wall requirement is an option. Maximum of 6 feet with columns up to 7 feet as an option, including that a 10-foot landscape buffer.
So there'll be an offer, it'll be a fence or be landscape, or it'll be a...
Yeah.
Okay. May I answer your question?
So there is going to be some kind of barrier?
Yes, either landscape or fence.
All right.
So.
But it just saddens me. I lived in Brandon since 79 when it was a small town. And I've seen it grow and grow and grow, and I've seen the town lose its identity. My wife got up here the last time, and one of the councilmen looked at my wife and said, "Well, honey, that's progress." To me, progress is like going to a Chinese buffet. You've got to know when to stop eating. You know, or the town's going to lose its identity. You know, I love living here. I love the location, and I love where I got my dream house and everything, but this bothers me. We got coyotes and gentlemen came up here. We do have a bald eagle that does fly around in there. Plus, we got gopher turtles. We've got a lot of wildlife in there. Has there been a wildlife study done in that area where they're planning to do this? Are they going to relocate the gopher turtles, relocate the coyotes? So what we have there, is that even, I'm just curious. You know?
Yeah.
But I'm sorry, and I thank you for your time.
I know you are. Thank you. Okay, David Olson. David gives your name and address, and you have five minutes.
David Olson, 1607 Lakeview Court, where airport. Zachary, this is Larry. I want to point out. Let me first say when you're not against developing, as you vote, you have to look at all the factors concerning this development. The property was selected for airport use according to the current master plan. Also, in November of 2012, Mike Murray, who was your environmental officer, had looked at the possibility of a retention pond in part of this location. Since airport runoff from gas maintenance area shops drains into the ditch going to Lake Cartridge. You know, about there, that ditch, all the concrete over there in airport, the water flows down through the ditch to Lake Cartridge. At the time, we had a problem with people dumping oil or hydraulic fluids getting spilled on the tarmac there and running down and into the lake. His idea was to build some type of retention pond if that property came developed, like was spoken back over previous years. Property came available. All of these plans were lost. I was, well, I was hopeful that maybe the city would partner up with the developer to try to work something out to help protect our lakes. Nothing has happened. We are now adding two communities to 21st Street. Has anybody looked at rerouting or improving traffic conditions? We have a problem with two children at different times are struck by cars waiting for school buses. The current airport master plan is requesting a future for the closure of 21st Street. This is not only about the seaplane phase, this is also because the runway out there crosses 21st Street. The FAA has deemed that a runway protection zone. They don't like the idea of cars passing or trucks or buses where airplanes coming down in. At some point, 21st Street will be closed. It doesn't say if, maybe in the master plan, it goes in details on how it will be closed. When this is done, have your traffic studies that you now have and are happy with, have any of them taken into consideration of the traffic all going one way on 21st Street? Adjacent to the property, there are no single-family homes with 50-foot lot lines set back to your requesting. We can go back and forth on what this was zoned, if it was in county, but now it's in the city, and we can request a PUD which throws all lot sizes out the window. My particular lot and many others over there is 150 feet wide. When you do your studies and come up with your density, when you did leisure shores, you don't take into consideration the streets, the ditches, the sidewalks. When you do the density of your new development, you add it in the coal parcel to come up with a density. It's a little bit of a shell game. During Hurricane Irma, the manholes and leper shores raised up of sewage flow into Lake Cartridge. You are now adding more homes to this lift station. I understand the developer has made some concessions to repairs of this. I really hope that happens. The noise study by APCON that you approved two weeks ago, and since you just approved it in red by this board and realized there is one flaw. Looking at data and charts provided, the study was conducted with aircraft following a pre-established flight pattern. A few hours there on a Sunday afternoon, you will soon realize aircraft flying in and out of this area do not fly within that pattern. I know the FDA has approved this study, you guys have already looked at it. If you look at the pattern and look what's actually happening there, it's a whole different world. The city's planning and many others is spending a year doing noise studies, making amendments for someone buying this community to sign a waiver about airport noise. Did anyone ever think or realize that not one person living in a house ever complained of airport noise? None of them. They love airport noise. Maybe you should have been working with the developer to form an aviation community with access to hangars, etc. There's way to develop and can be done and all boxes can be crossed. Have we done that?
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Jim, W. Arber, give us your name and address again for the record, until we have it on the tape.
General mine, 3000 Lakeview Court, Northwest. I'm disputing the location of the 65 decibel contour because it did not include background noise. When I would ran geophysical surveys and hydrogeologic investigations, the first thing I did was consider background noise. Now, on the APCON report study, all they considered was aircraft noise. But yet you have traffic that goes on 21st Street constantly. And with that traffic, you get associated boom boxes from the cars that battle in windows. You get the sport utility motorcycles or the rocket launchers that you can hear for all kinds of distances. So to just say we're only going to consider noise from the airport, it's not justifying. You have to consider noise from traffic also. So I'm going to ask a question, and I don't want an answer now because I chewed up a lot of my time last time. You can answer afterwards. Where does the 65 decibel contour line fall after you include noise from traffic? Can you bring up the graphic, please, show the site plan? Okay, that's good enough. Okay, when you look at the 2017 data, the 65 decibel contour line fell right up here. And that is based on 17 lights per day in 2017. In 2018, it comes to 18 and a half lights per day. This is on the annual average now. And that shifted it down about 120 feet. So what that means is that noise is very sensitive. And what that does is that locks the city in to 18 and a half lights per day on runway 29 for perpetuity. You can't increase that because if you do, it's going to cause that 65 decibel contour to encroach into these existing residences. So it kind of surprises me that the city would be willing to sacrifice future flights on runway 29 for this PUD. The last thing I'd like to say is after I get my answer on where that 65 decibel contour line falls and you include noise traffic, is the criteria that you used to approve this, it was met the last time when we were here. So there's other factors that you have to consider, and that's what the DEO did. It sent this back because they were concerned that the noise was going to impact the public health. So now there's reasonable doubt because I'm sure we don't know where the 65 decibel contour line falls, what residences are going to be impacted. It should shift it further into the PUD. Last, I'm not opposed to growth. I just want, I don't want it to be a PYD, a pack amendment development. You can make this commensurate with the property sizes over on Lakeview Road and not decrease the value of our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Anybody? Karen, do you have anything else you want to say? You got five minutes.
Thank you again, Karen Tendro, for the record. Just want to address a couple of the concerns that were raised tonight. Buckets with regards to the buffer area, and I don't know if there's some clarity, but it's not worth it. If you look at Pierce Road, we're going to have a 10-foot wide buffer along Pierce Road. And if you see our site plan, there's actually three stormwater traps along Pierce Road. There are three homes that are directly touching Pierce, meaning their lot line actually comes up to Pierce Road. That's one lot here, one lot here, and one lot here. The rest are setback. In addition to the required minimum residential setbacks from the property line, they're now setback significantly by stormwater tracks that will happen place. So it's not as if the development is being built directly adjacent to Pierce Road. So I think if you look at the view line off of Pierce from anybody's backyard, not only are you going to have some significant buffering by virtue of the stormwater traps, but even if you have those three homes that are closest to Pierce Road, we're still setback at those minimum requirements as noted within the PUD plans. So that's also going to be in addition to a 10-foot landscape buffer, and the developer certainly has the option on some of these homes of putting in a wall or fence with the minimum requirements that are noted as well. I would also note that on Lakeview Court, I could certainly understand if the homeowner here has some concerns. But there's four lots here, and those lots again have that same minimum buffer with all of the plenty requirements that would be in place for the permissibility of the developer putting in a wall the time of development if they choose. If anybody is concerned about cars driving through 10-foot landscape buffers, that is certainly something we can condition in a development, a declaration of restrictive covenants. And any typical declaration I've ever worked on has provisions like that where you restrict how you access. The logical access point is of course going to be off of these internal roadways where you're going to have your front driveways leading to the houses. So hopefully nobody's driving through their landscape buffers in the back of their yard, but that's certainly something that can be controlled through private declaration of restrictive covenants. And I presume that's a code violation too, if you're not going to, as you're trying to shake his head, if those are not maintaining and they're using landscape buffers as additional unofficial driveways into the rear of their property. With regards to student environment health concerns, again, everything the developer has to do has to meet all of the local and state requirements for environmental protection. And your staff, we underwent all of your requests that were required of the code, get to the point that we're at today without any concerns being raised by your staff. The confidence and substantial evidence on the record comes from your staff report where your staff concluded that we meet all of the minimum requirements necessary for rezoning to be approved, and we meet the compatibility analysis of your comprehensive plan for allowing the residential low density development on this site. I'm not sure with regards to the master plan on whether this is a property that's supposed to be a wire, but it's a ragged property. And so the seller has a discretion short of taking by the government, they have a discretion to sell their land to an end purchaser. And in this instance, we spent a significant amount of time and money going through a process of coming up with a plan that your staff was able to support, that the FAA was able to support from a noise study perspective as well. Any questions on whether the validity of the noise study outcomes? I think we should default to the FAA, who did independent review and had to accept that study, and the city adopted again that study on January 28th. So all of the evidence that's been presented today is in favor of allowing for and according to staff and planning commission's recommendation for approval of both of these ordinances. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are lingering questions or thoughts in your mind as to something that might make you more comfortable with the development, we would appreciate the opportunity to have a dialogue on that, rather than a wholesale rejection of an otherwise code compliant and comprehensive plan compliant plan that we put together for one or two ordinances tonight.
Mr. Vice President?
Yeah. What's the problem about the wildlife here? Is there wildlife study?
A lot of wildlife study was not required as part of this supplemental. So if that's as part of site plan going forward, I would defer to the normalists whether that's a requirement or not.
Right, I mean, I don't know that there's, has been a study done to date, I mean, if there's goat tortoises or any sandspits or anything of that nature on there, they would be required to mitigate or relocate those. I mean, this was a former growth, I'm not sure, I mean, there could be goat tortoises on here that would have to be rehunted.
And we did do a phase one study.
What is the phase one study? They looked at skinks or, because we had issues with skinks on these properties, we got some of the local fields on some of the town.
And I don't know, did I just take a look at that specifically? I don't know if I just took a look at that specifically in terms of sand, sand skinks. But the phase one that we submitted does typically attestate for soils, if the soils are contaminated and there's issues that need to be remediated. And that's what we would look to as well for financing, let us typically want that to make sure there are no problems environmentally on the site that you as a contract purchaser within the contract before entering this property, and none were identified that phase one, which would have triggered a necessity of phase two environmental analysis on the property. So from a perspective of a clean phase one, yes, and my knowledge definitely have that. If there was anything above it beyond, I don't believe that we had anything else required because it was never requested as part of our application process.
So my last question, and we're going to, I'll close the public hearing. The sidewalk on Riddle Road, she, one of the ladies raised a real good question, that's not that necessary. Would the developer be opposed to foregoing that and maybe putting that money towards a fence on Lakeview? Would that be something that?
Absolutely.
Possibly, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Sure, could I save you some money if you did that or a fence all the way down Pierce? I don't know. All right, anybody else? All those who are in agreement with the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, good. So if you wish to speak, raise your right hand and we'll put you up to the city attorney. Our city clerk, city clerk, he's right.
Please stand and raise your right hand. You solemnly swear forthwith that the test is clear about the truth, the whole truth, and that we will persist until we get to that, that you give your name.
Thank you. Okay, city attorney.
Second and third orders number O-1818, an ordinance amended, ordinance 1103, the 2025 will arrange a comprehensive plan. I'll revise the future land use, that's theory by signing residential laws. Future land use is two and a half plus, fulfilling our orders of the top 50 to 60 to 50.